I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we can just stay standing for a few moments. Uh, for all the armed services, emergency responders, and for any local ones. Local or not local. At our best. Thank you. Uh, like I said, good evening, welcome. We have a few public hearings tonight.
I'm not excited.
Um. So the first one is, we talked about this the last meeting when we set up the public hearing for tonight. It is to clear up, clean up some of the bills when they go out in June. It's not, it's not a new tax or anything. It's clearly just, we have to pass this in order to, when you get the bills, when you get your new bills in June, it'll have all the breakdown of, of all the exemptions that we offer as we basically run off the town's assessment. So we follow their assessment. We don't have assessing in the village. That was, uh, changed many, many years ago. So, uh, that's just to clean this up. So there's a copy of the, of the Village of Highland Falls introductory local law, number three of 2025, amendment chapter two one two, taxation of the Village of Highland Falls code, just a code. And I need a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Garjulo, seconded by trustee Carroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing is now open. Doesn't seem to be coming on the speaker.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
Someone has to live.
I can't talk right here.
Anybody have any questions or anything on this particular public hearing? Again, I'll read a little bit of it. The legislative findings and purpose and intent, the Village of Highland Falls relinquished its status as an assessing unit in twenty twenty, two thousand and two pursuant to one four zero two three of the state real property tax law, and adopted the Town of Highlands assessment role. As a result, only the town, not the village, may modify the final certified town assessment role to reflect local village tax exemptions. The village board finds and determines that imposing an additional burden to the tax assessor to modify the tax role is unnecessary, and instead concludes that the village should confer the same tax exemptions for senior citizens, veterans, fire volunteers, and ambulance workers as provided by the town. Again, it's really just housekeeping. You're gonna just see it on the bill now, which is great. So all those tax exemptions roll over for the town assessment, and everyone will get to see those, and that's important to John and Jane Q taxpayer. So if nobody has any questions or comments about this particular section of the public hearings tonight, I'll ask for a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
So motion by trustee Ramis, seconded by trustee Garjulo. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Everybody hear me okay? The next public hearing is in regards to, public hearing proposed local law number four of 2025, titled amendment to chapter two one two imposing a hotel occupancy tax. The legislative findings and purpose of intent. The Village of Highland Falls Board of Trustees finds and determines, actually before I start this, I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Carroll.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The Village of Highland Falls Board of Trustees finds and determines that imposing a hotel occupancy tax on hotels and motels operating in the village will generate tax revenue to fund local infrastructure projects and contribute to the community development while lessening the tax burden on individual residential property owners and other business owners. So, this is the same thing the town is doing. We had to get a home rule authorization from the, from New York State, which meant we had to have someone from the Assembly and the Senate carry this local law through Albany. Sitting on the governor's desk, the desk, they vote on it, the governor has to sign it. She did that. Now we're at this part where it's the public hearing to the public. So is there anybody who wanna talk about this introductory local law number four of 2025, which is amendment to chapter two one two imposing a hotel occupancy tax?
Have a question?
Sure.
Hope any of you have any calls? Yeah, I just wondered, I mean, what is the, the short or long definition of a hotel? Because, I mean, does it include our, uh, short-term state? We have a lot of Airbnbs. We have, uh, things like that that are generating, uh, incomes for the owners and that are kind of shutting out, uh, homeownership, um, in lieu of a lot of people taking advantage of Airbnbs. I wonder if any of that is included? Yes. To the extent that Airbnbs are registered as businesses, or how, how do you know who they are?
We're gonna get, for tonight, we're just dealing with the actual occupancy tax, and then as we continue going down this road, it's something we're gonna be addressing.
Hi, Erin Helly from the Association of Developers. I am not a slow, uh, village resident. I'm not a voter, um, but I have been working with developers to bring them here, to bring new business here. I am one hundred percent for anything that will help this village and will help the residents of this village, but I do think that timing, it should be a consideration. Like, if you do decide to move forward on it, it shouldn't be implemented for a couple of years until we allow future businesses to be more established and potentially a hotel that might be built to, to get to a point of profitability and stability. Because I think if we implement it now, even though it does come out of the people that are staying here, it does raise the price to stay in this village. And right now, we wanna get people to come here, and we wanna get people to invest here. And if we are raising our prices, it's gonna be hard to do that. So, again, I do think it's a great move, and I love that you guys are thinking about this. I would just suggest to consider implementation a few years down the road once developers and future hotel owners have a chance to become profitable.
Annie Scott Quo Montgomery. Um, yeah, the town voted on five percent occupancy many years ago. You know, now we're asking people really to pay over thirteen percent to stay here. Airbnb already takes five percent occupancy out of all Airbnb end taxes booked. So you have people that are paying, and, and again, I guess you don't care. They're just coming to visit. But for somebody who owns a lodging business, it can affect us in a negative way. So, um, five percent is just real hard.
Just sort, just to clarify, tonight, we're not setting a rate?
Oh, yes.
Is the rate in there tonight too?
Yes. It's a statutory rate, up to five percent.
Up to five percent, okay.
At the local law states five percent.
Harry Avenue, uh, Highland Falls. I'm for the, uh, for the occupancy tax. We have a mountain of debt. We need more, you wanna spend money, this board wants to spend money on improvements to the village. How are you going to increase the revenues coming into the village? And, and I'd like to really know, you know, besides property taxes, uh, you know, the, the parking, what other revenue generators do you have? And this is another way of taking care of some of the debt. I'll wait until you, to your time.
Uh, it's public hearing.
Oh, well, I know, I'm a member of the board, but.
I apologize, I'm just kidding, no sense.
Well, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, of the, uh, tax rate, whatever you come up with, and, and more, uh, I know you want to spend money on the village, and you're gonna need the, the revenue instead of increasing the debt.
Anybody else? Sorry, again, mics in and out, so I'm projecting. If you can't hear me, just let me know.
May I?
Sure.
I, I'm actually not a proponent for the, uh, for the occupancy tax. I think it puts an unfair burden, I think it's put it, it's an unfair added cost, uh, to the hotel motel industry, and we just don't have the tourism at that time, at this time to do that. Um, Orange County actually already puts a five percent occupancy tax and has imposed on hotel, hotel, hotel owners. Um, how it's done is the hotel operators collect the tax from occupancy and admit it to the Orange County Commissioner's finances. So we were, we're actually asking for the average Joe to pay ten percent to stay here. And I just don't think we have the tourism for that. Further, it doesn't really suit the short-term rentals, as Obo was saying. Uh, because there's no way to put a parameter on that. We don't know. A lot of that's word of mouth, and there's no real way to say, hey, we're staying here. There's just no real way to put a parameter on it. So, um, I think down the line, absolutely. Like Ms. Helly said, I think down the line, we have had the tourism. I think we'd be in a better position to do that. Um, even with the short-term rentals, I think down the line, we should be looking at a registry, um, and a, um, and a, uh, permit, um, fee for short-term rentals. Um, Town of Fish Gold does, I think, a five hundred dollar annual registry fee for short-term rentals. I think Woodbury does a three hundred. Um, but at this point, for here and us, I, I just don't think we have the numbers, the tourism to do that. We're trying to bring people in, and I just don't think that's gonna be, uh, something suitable for us. But again, that's a personal opinion, and I, I leave it to the, I'll be true.
Jennifer Ryan, um, I'm a new village owner, um, on Dora, and I'm so glad to be here in Highland Falls. Um, I agree that, um, we really want to encourage families and, and visitors to come to our wonderful town, our village here. We want to encourage them to spend money to make memories together and be happy, and have great food together and shopping, and the way we're gonna do that is by bringing them in, um, to our hotels and our short-term rentals and, um, uh, creating a safe, a great space for them to be. And the way to do that is, is not by raising the prices on that so that they go somewhere else, to Woodbury, et cetera, but keeping them right here.
Hi, I'm Pete Kellner, thirty-seven Laurel Lane. I'm an Airbnb owner. I read last week's paper. I haven't registered. I need to do that. I think demand here in, in this community is inelastic, meaning that price doesn't matter too much. I think people will pay an extra ten dollars to be here rather than to be in Cornwall or Central Valley. We don't have nearby competition, so our location is a great strength. The village needs money. I think this is a way to get money. I don't think we should have annual permit fees because that's just another task, tax on the residents who are renting Airbnbs. If we tax our guests, we're taxing people who don't live here, so they're just bringing in more money to us. So I think if the town needs money, a great way to get it is, um, you know, through these rentals. But I think we want our guests to pay, uh, because I think that they're gonna stay here, and a few dollars isn't gonna make a difference because we're so relatively isolated, and, uh, and I definitely don't want another three hundred, five hundred dollars to be put on the residents. Thank you.
I do wanna say, I think you, you have to separate the landlord registry is separate from what we're talking about with the occupancy tax. Landlord registry is simply saying that you don't live in a home, who lives in your home for emergency services and things like that. So the act, uh, again, the article in the paper is separate from what we're talking about.
But I think the one's leading to the other. I mean, first, we have to know who has short-term rentals here, get everyone to sign up so that then they can be taxed. So I'm assuming that's the way it's gonna go.
I, I disagree with that. I just think that's more of a, uh, you know, more of a safety.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Jim Tigglow, Mountain Avenue. I'm totally against any type of tax that is going to in any way impact new development in our community. Does anyone on this board have a sense of the value that we could, uh, secure with this hotel tax? And, um, is it in the order of a million dollars or is it in the order of a, a hundred dollars? And if, and if it is in the order of a hundred or five hundred or a thousand dollars, that represents twenty-five dollars per year to the resident, why are we even paying this? So I'd like to know what that, if there is, if someone's done their homework and knows what the value of that is.
Sure, come on up.
Please keep in mind that that five percent goes to the state and the county. We don't distribute that additional five percent in our coffers.
I'm just, you know, right now, it's a public hearing, so some of the comments, I'm just gonna clean up towards when we get done. I'm trying not to get into a back-and-forth dialogue. It's a public comment. It's, we're, we're here to hear from the public, and it's important that we have some input from the public. But there's a couple little things that I'm just gonna have to clarify. But that's okay. This is all part of the process. Anybody else have any public comment on this, regards to this?
Are you voting today?
I, I can't hear you.
Are you voting today?
Uh, probably. Everybody else okay? I'll take a motion to close the.
Is there any way you can separate, like, hotels from Airbnbs? Because most of the hotels in the area are family-owned or investors trying to come, and Airbnbs are investors too. But Airbnbs are taken away from homes that people can stay to live here, that are sitting empty in hopes that it gets rented, and taken away from people that wanna stay here and live. Is there any way to separate that way?
Anybody else? Okay, I take a motion to close the public hearing on this particular introductory local law, number four of 2025. Then we can discuss it. Motion seconded by trustee Carroll, I'm sorry, motion by trustee Olivia. Seconded by trustee Carroll. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, before we move on to the other, one more public hearing and then hearing, a couple quick things. Woodbury, Woodbury's already doing this. They're already implementing a hotel tax. Same thing we're dealing with because they have the same issues we have. Number two, local folks who own hotels are the first ones to create a certiorary proceeding to reduce their tax on how much they pay, both the village, the school, and the town. We've dealt with it several times, so I need to figure out how to absorb and get more of those tax ratables when they take them away, because I don't wanna keep going to the, the single, two-family people, okay? Which is, represents ninety-nine point nine percent of the people in this room. All right, that's two. Three. I have, I hear complaints daily, both from the board and the public, about Airbnbs. Whether it's parking, whether it's property maintenance, building inspectors right here, et cetera, et cetera. I have to do something because I can't even get folks to get on a registry. I am incurring more expenses, whether it's on the town side, which by the way, Mr. Hannah Wolk gets paid through the A-Fund. What is the A-Fund for the town? It represents the entire Town of Highlands, which means us village taxpayers too get affected by that number. So I have to figure out how I can get revenue from folks that are causing an additional expense. This is the way to do it. If a room was two hundred and fifty dollars, we're talking about twelve dollars and fifty cents. Nobody's going somewhere else for twelve dollars and fifty cents. And that five percent for this local hotel tax stays right here. Doesn't go anywhere else. The county has theirs, the state may have theirs. I don't, I, I can't worry about all that. All I can worry about is here. And that's on a two hundred and fifty dollar room. Now, to talk about structures or Camelot that has not been built, and we've been discussing for the past, I don't wanna say we're getting close to a decade, but we're, we're, we're getting close to seven years. You know, you wouldn't wait seven years if you needed to put a new boiler in, and it was, it was going, and every winter you didn't know if it was gonna be the last time it was gonna work. You know, I have to do something because I, we have to do this, we have to do that. We, I have people come in for infrastructure. I have people come in for, I need a new curb. I need a new water line. Uh, you know, you can't have one without the other, and I, and I keep going back to the same wealth and drawing the same water. And folks who own Airbnbs, I think it's great that they wanna invest in the community. Believe me, there is a need for it here, and these folks are making good money, and God bless them. I have no problem with entrepreneurs. I think it's great. But not at the expense of the residents here. And if I have to figure out how to generate a few more dollars to offset any type of expense that I'm gonna incur, I gotta come up with a plan. I gotta come up with an idea, and I gotta come up with a, a way to do it. And that's what this is. This is not gonna turn anybody away. It is not gonna turn into a issue where someone's not gonna come here for ten dollars, eight dollars, whatever the board decides. We can do the max. We can go, we can start at three percent. Doesn't have to, does it have to be five?
I, I'd look into that, but I think it.
Okay, whatever. If you guys don't wanna vote on it tonight, I would strongly suggest we do it at the next meeting. But, you know, when you're on the campaign trail and you're promising to do this, this, and this, you, you have to be able to deliver to folks, and this is a way to do it without going to the same folks who've been paying for the last ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. I have folks who are in this room tonight that got up to speak, who have no problem talking about what we need to be doing. This is something we need to be doing. Other communities are doing it. Woodbury especially, because it was brought up a couple times tonight. And I'm not, this isn't, I'm not trying to like, oh, actually, I'm just, this is just factoids. You know, I, I'm not gonna bring, we are not gonna bring anything up here that doesn't seem to make sense for the community. And at least we're gonna have a dialogue about it. But, believe me, this is, we're at these situations because we have to get creative. We have to get creative, and I am tired of going back to the same folks time and time again. Believe me, I'm one of the folks, so, you know, I get it. So I hope the board understands that, and I appreciate it if you don't wanna vote for it, or you want I'm staying, or it's a no. But at the same time, if it's a no vote, I hope you can bring something forward that's not just raising taxes on properties. Does any other board members have any other comments? Feel free, as, before we move on. Okay, the next public hearing, which is a continuation, it's, we're, even after tonight, we're gonna leave it open. We did close the first two, um, is a public hearing to remove fluoride from the village drinking water, and it's a continuation. I would suspect we're still a few, several months away from making a decision, if we make a decision at all. Uh, we keep getting new information, and as we get it, we try to put it on the website, we should be putting it on the website, and we have it available. Village walls need it. So, uh, we got another little factoid sheet, and it's just some general stuff, which was good, but, and it is available at, and it's from Dr., Dr. Lena Garcia, DMD DDS, thirty-three West Higgins Road, South Bergen, Barrington, Illinois. And, um, and I'm still waiting for my local dentist to get us something too, so. We just wanna keep it open. Again, I mentioned the Village of Walden only because they went through it, and it took several months of fact-finding and getting information. So, again, if we, if the board decides, we probably won't take any action. But it's open now. I'll take a, no, no motion because it's open, so if anyone has any comments, please feel free to get up and make comment.
I think the pictures provided were very misleading. It's showing erosion. Is there, is there exhaust fans? Is there exhaust fans in the room? Mr. Carroll said it during a meeting. Oh, I'm surprised those guys are even okay in there. If he's noticing that as just a bystander, then the ventilation is obviously not proper, or not the right way. So can you really blame the chemical for doing what it's supposed to do if it's just not being handled the correct way? Or being ventilated properly, or being stored correctly?
I'm Jennifer Cooper, and I'd like to add, you know.
Pardon, um, I, it's, you can't hear.
You might just have to speak it to the top of it.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. All right, so I wasn't sure if I was gonna make it here tonight, so I actually had prepared an email I was gonna send. So if it's all right, I'll just read it, if I can do that.
And maybe, it's still emails, just so.
Oh, yeah, definitely will, for sure. Okay. I have been reading in the newspaper with great interest about the proposal to remove fluoride from the water supply to Highland Falls. In the past, I had read about other communities that were doing the same, and I had always thought it would be beneficial for Highland Falls to stop the practice as well. I have read many articles over the years that have cited the negative effects of fluoride, and I regret it that it was added to our water here. When my kids were younger, I felt guilty that I did not buy bottled water for them because I was aware that studies have shown fluoride to cause diminished IQs. Therefore, I was happily surprised to read recently that the village is now considering the practice of adding fluoride, excuse me, that they have now considered stopping the practice of adding fluoride. My thought is that Mother Nature knows what she's doing, and most things are best left in their natural state. But it also turns out that there are quite a few studies that have specifically shown fluoride to cause negative effects. Unsurprisingly, the U.S. has not conducted its own studies on the issue, but they have reviewed the studies from other countries and agreed with conclusions. The bottom line is that there is an inverse relationship between fluoride and IQ. So when I, so when fluoride consumption increases, IQ decreases. This is a significant concern for both the children and the elderly of our community. Recently, the News of the Highlands noted that some community residents here were concerned about the teeth of our children. Please know that I am concerned about the development of their brains. Buying bottled water to avoid fluoride is not something that everyone can afford to do. Citizens should also be able to trust that their water supply is free of anything that could possibly cause them harm. A quick Google search revealed this brief AI overview with an explanation of fluoride, and it includes some of the negative effects. Fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral found in water, soil, and certain foods. While it can help protect teeth at low levels, too much of it disrupts calcium signaling, mitochondrial function, and the normal development of tooth enamel, making it porous or mottled. The overview provides a link to the National Library of Medicine on the National Institute of Health's website, which posts an article about dental fluoresces, which is caused by chronic fluoride toxicity. Although the intention is for the added fluoride to improve teeth health, it can cause discoloration and even damage to teeth. Too much fluoride can damage enamel, leaving teeth even more susceptible to decay. It reports that it's difficult to quantify or limit fluoride exposure because total intake comes from several different sources, not just what is added to water supply. This may explain why cases of dental fluoresces have increased significantly over the years. Further, lifetime accumulation of fluoride in the bones can lead to increased risk of bone fractures. The Journal of the American Medical Association Pediatrics conducted a meta-anal- The Journal of the American Medical Association Pediatrics conducted a meta-analysis of the studies that were conducted by other countries, and they pub, they published their findings in January of this year. The U.S. also has an inter-agency program called the National Toxicology Program, which runs by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. The NTP also conducted their own meta-analysis, and the results are presented in a preca- excuse me, I have some current-
It's okay, you're doing great.
The results are presented in a detailed monograph, which is published on the government website for the National Institute of Health. Then it's called the Monograph on the State of the Science Concerning Fluoride Exposure and Neurodevelopment and Cognition: A Systematic Review. On page sixty-two, it states, "The results from eighteen of the nineteen high-quality studies that evaluated IQ in children provide consistent evidence of the inverse association between estimated fluoride exposure and IQ scores." And of course, I do have the links to various... So I do realize this is a very controversial topic, and you're going to be able to find experts and locals on both sides of this. Everybody has their opinion, even, like I said, with professionals, and you're going to have to decide, you know, what you think is best. But I did really want you to know, because I don't think this side it really has been from what I've been reading in the papers, I want you to know that there are people that are, um, you know, not vocal about it, but really agree with the removal or the discontinuation of adding it. Thank you for your consideration. And I will send the email because it has all the links to a lot of the different studies. And maybe it's only a little small dive into it, I'm sure everybody's doing their own research, and there's a lot out there to read and look into, but I hope you will. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ronnie Coffey, and I'm here at the Pride Citizen and at the Nine Revolution Order. First of all, I want to thank you very much for this kind of open forum, because this is the way a democracy is supposed to work, and I kudos to you guys for keeping your minds open and listening to as many voices as are ready to speak. I think we can all agree that what we want is what's best for the community, and at the same time, not to do any harm to anyone of any age. I'll tell you the truth, I have not thought so much about fluoride in my entire life as I have thought about fluoride in the last couple of months. And I've tried to do some diligent research, starting with the definition like Jennifer was talking about and, and such. And so I started with the CDC, which I'm sure you have probably, in your team diligence, have read that they feel that the addition of fluoride to the water supply has been one of the ten greatest contributions to public health in the twentieth century. And they felt additionally, in their conclusion, it states, "Unity water fluoridation is an inexpensive means that improves oral health for all residents, for a community, young and old, rich and poor." So from my personal experience, I can speak to something about young people, and that is that I personally experienced this, and as a teacher, I saw this, that children with poor dental health can have significant pain. And children in pain, it interferes with them concentrating in school and can lead to absence from school. And so I think that's an important thing to consider when we think about dental health. Coincidentally, uh, in the last few months, there was an article in AARP Magazine by a researcher, Jessica Magala, who does some frequent articles in health in AARP and some other women's magazines. But she brings up the importance of elderly people and their dental health, and the consequences of losing teeth as you get older. There's even a recommendation that older folks ask their dentists about fluoride toothpaste that have extra fluoride in them. Again, on a personal note, I have to say that as a kid, uh, every, an older person in my family had false teeth. And now that I'm at the age that they're at, that they were at at that time, um, I'm very happy that I don't, and I, and none of my contemporaries do, and I'm hoping that that possibly was a result of fluoride addition to the water. Now, you have important decisions to make. And I know that fluoride, although it's not a corrosive, when it is combined with chloramine in a water supply, it can cause the leaching of lead from brass pipes. So I am hoping that, uh, should fluoride continue to be added to the water supply, that it can be not combined with something called chloramine, I don't even know if that is added to our water supply, but it seems like the combination of those two together in some studies that I have read, um, could be, um, the problem and not the fluoride itself. Now, um, there is the recommended amount, and as Jennifer said, excess fluoride can, can cause danger, and it would be very important, which I'm sure you're doing already, to regulate the amount of fluoride that goes into the water. And then finally, there was an interesting study, I was Googling, uh, communities, common like ours, who have had fluoride, gotten rid of fluoride, and resumed fluoride. Those would be Alton, Illinois, Mount Pleasant, Michigan, McMillan, North Dakota, there's a bunch of others, but they're not small communities like ours, I wanted to kind of stick to small communities like ours. And, um, so they had found that the amount of, of cavities and the amount of money being spent on children's dental care rose tremendously without the use of fluoride. But there is one thing I just want to end with, thank you for your patience. This was from an article by the University of Alaska. Jew noticed had more fluoride, but they eliminated fluoride. And the conclusion of this particular scientist on the, um, study was, "We fortify wheat with folic acid to prevent spina bifida and other neural tube defects. We add calcium and vitamin D to milk to prevent rickets, and iodine to prevent boiter." And fluoride is an important mineral for the development and production of teeth. Whatever you decide, I think it's critically important that before a decision is made, a study is designed to track the effects of the decision, whether it's to keep fluoride in the water supply or to eliminate the water supply. Because either way, the data will, will be important for us to make decisions in the future.
Still, Pete, Phil, and Thirty-Seven Laurel Lane. I just want to encourage the board to look to and listen to the experts, the people at the CDC and the NIH. You know, with social media, there's a lot of TikTok experts, and people can write papers on anything, but I think the science is pretty clear on the positive effects of fluoride. So it's encourage you to look at the right, you know, and I'm sure you are, look at the right sources. But I think of that because I just brought this up and pulled this out, this handout on this. I taught critical thinking for, for a long time at West Point, and if a cadet turned in this paper as an analysis of an issue, it would fail for biased language. So this person's a clear activist or partisan, um, and I think you can see it in the language and the way things are expressed. And so, um, just a caution that, and again, if we're going for facts, is make sure we're getting the balanced facts and not listening to, to take their activists. So thank you.
I just want to thank Colonel Kilner for bringing that up, because I had neglected to mention that myself. As an English teacher, I, um, for many, many years, uh, there's, there's loaded language in here. Some, there's a word, uh, she, she uses propaganda at one point, where someone else might have used the word evidence. Uh, there's, I can, we could start from, right? But the other thing is that, uh, Dr., uh, I was looking at her website after I read this, because I thought there must be an agenda out there somewhere. She does not even, um, put herself forward as an expert on fluoride, to her credit. She describes herself as a holistic dentist, and, um, and there is no evidence that she had ever been part of any study on, on fluoride.
Jack Jenner, president of, of the York Park, Highland Falls. Two months ago, I wrote up the, uh, the evidence that was being presented came from, what was it?
Wikipedia.
Wikipedia. Well, this is the same thing that's in Wikipedia, so it's clearly not credible. I just want to point out that fluoride is a member of the halogen family, as I said before, and that's the three elements in that table, or three elements in that table are, the first three are fluorine, chlorine, and iodine. Our bodies are evolved to need fluoride. We don't need too much, that's bad. We don't need too little, that's very bad too. We need to write it down. Chlorine, it goes in our water to disinfect it, it goes into pools at higher concentrations. It has a disinfectant in it, but also it's a, it's a salt, sodium chloride. You got, our bodies have to have some sodium chloride. Too much salt, bad. Too little salt, that's bad. Same thing with iodine. We need iodine in our bodies. Too little iodine, that's bad, that's why we have iodized salt. And it's also been brought up that, you know, somehow this is forest medication. Well, think about it. You buy a bottle of milk, it's modernized, it's pasteurized for sure, and it has vitamin A and D in it. You look at the breads and cereals, and they all have vitamins and minerals added. And the reason for that is, there are very good health reasons for that. So things like rickets, which was brought up earlier, that's pretty much a thing of the past. Scurvy, we don't care about that much anymore. There are certain limits, natural levels of things that we do need, and if we don't have enough in our water, then we should fluoridate it. Again, if anybody doesn't want it, they can put in bottled milk, not bottled milk, bottled water, I'm sorry. But it's, it's so important to get it right. We don't want too much, we don't want too little, but the benefits to the public are huge. One other thing I was reading, I'm not sure where it was, that what they were talking about, there's less fluoride in breast milk than in, uh, in milk that is mixed in formula, when you mix water with, with fluoride. Well, again, breast milk is best for the babies, we know that, but many people don't do that. Because that's a really important issue with somebody, they can always buy bottled water, but under that specific. But then the final point I made, a couple months, a month or two ago, was that the people who are going to be hurt the most by taking fluoride out are the poor, the marginalized, members of society that don't get enough of what they need. So you've got to make a very important decision on what's best for the people of Highland Falls. And if it means upgrading your facilities and raising your water bill a little bit, well, you got to do that because you're going to have to do it anyway at some point. So let's do this right. Let's follow the, you know, the science. Let's not be taking water, uh, something out that is doing such a fantastic job, and just because other communities are doing it doesn't mean that we have to do it. And that brings me to Walden, which keeps coming up. What is the natural level of fluoride in their water? We don't know. What is the natural level of fluoride in our water? We don't even know that number for sure. It may happen. But let's try to get the optimum level that our bodies need and proceed from there. The idea of critical thinking, I mentioned the last week, you really need to, it's not just about critical thinking, everybody has a bias, I know bias. I don't want fluoride in the water. I suggested to you that you find on the basis of critical thinking, you're going to object to, you know, some type of-
We can't hear you, we can't hear you back here. Can't hear.
How about that, is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you. So in order to get the information, I, based on what I said last time, I did a little deep dive myself, and I can't find anything where there's been controlled, objective analysis of the benefits or not of fluoride. The European Union has restricted it, some communities have restricted it, some communities have added it, well, backed it in a way, but I have yet to find one that, a lady mentioned that each study on the impact of IQ, that was a very critical thinking analysis of seventy-nine studies, they just missed ones that had bias. They ended up, I think, of nineteen of those studies that were objective and they thought were legitimate, and that now they're in scientific process. But that's the only study I found relative to IQ. I can't find anything in the impact on the benefits or not on the impact. So I would suggest to you, maybe you could find some experts that, they, because of the, the leverage of the town board, of the village board, you could find somebody that has some kind of research on it. I can't find any.
Anybody else?
Run out of that, the Pariah. In the last public meeting on the fluoride situation, there was a suggestion that it be put to a public vote, and I want to reiterate, I, I think that this board should put it to a public vote, and let the public decide, the residents decide.
Kevin, draw a freaking press. Uh, that's one of the things I do, I'm not the analytical kind, I'm the emotional kind. And I'm the kind of guy who goes by the seat of his pants and is like, seeing something like this is very disappointing. This is so one-sided, and I will go too. If we're going to do this fairly, let's have every opinion, whatever side, if it's the IQ side, if it's the, the OD side, it's fine. And also, maybe to the financial aspect, you said in a couple of the articles I read, uh, read about the equipment we have, and how the fluoride's doing. I don't mind. They say fluoride isn't personal, but if you combine with some of the things that might be in our water system, is there extra lead in our water system? Actually, Jim, I get brown water in my, my toilet, almost how many times, every month. So I think really what we have to do, I think give this a vote, let the people in the town and the village decide what they want to do. Not being personal against you guys, I don't think it should be you voting, that should be the town. And if we're going to have to pay the consequences of building, you know, better infrastructure for our water, let's do it, I'll pay the taxes. But let's get every side, this is disappointing. I want every side to put back.
You're there?
No, not yet. Anybody else from the public?
Anybody else from the public? Again, just keep in mind, we're going to keep this open, I'll take some board comments and we're going to move on.
All right, I'm actually the one with that particular handout. I'm going to say, I'm more of a nature versus nurture type of person. My son, and I'm just going to say it, my son has never drank tap water in his whole life, he's never had a cavity. My husband and I have the most prolific teeth in the whole world. So look at that aspect of it. Now Peter and I have really been taking deep dives into fluoride as it presents to our watershed. And I'm going to tell you something, the evasive and corrosive value is incredible and visibly toxic. Now you might say these pictures are skewed, and I'm going to let Peter talk about what he knows about this. But I reached out, I didn't, you know, I've been medicine to really even say anything. And I got some guff for that. But I really want to do the research, and I really want to reach out outside of our community, too. So I reached out and I had conversations with sources in the field of water and operations. I had a long conversation with a fellow out in Washington State. And he has arms-length of education experience and licensure, including a Class Four Plant Treatment Operator's License, which is actually the highest tier of municipal water treatment. And he's traveled around the country, talking about fluoride in water systems and stuff like that. And he said, and I'm quoting what he said, he said, "So most of my career, I believed that the benefit of fluoridation outweighed any risk. Up until 2020 or so, there was no scientific evidence that fluoridation presented any negative health issues. Controversy centered on the right to choose." And that's really what we're talking about here, it's a two-sided thing, are we going to choose or we're not. However, I had a new report put out by the CDC, the FDA in 2022, that did find some correlation, not causation, between high doses of fluoride and cancer. I remember reading the executive summary and reversing my opinion, there are other means to gain the benefit of fluoride, especially for young children, than injecting the chemical into the community's drinking water. Now, further, he went on to say that water plants, again, he's traveled all over the country with this Class Four license, he said, "All over the country, the water plants are opting out of fluoride treatment due to its toxicity to the workers and its corrosive value and cost to continuously remediate." Now I'm going to go, again, Peter's going to talk about pictures that we say, but I'm going to say from the report that I just gave you. It's not unfactual, this report, you might say it's biased, but it's not unfactual. And this is a woman who has been a dentist for 30 years, and yes, she might be a holistic dentist, but she said, and these are facts, fluoride is not a nutrient to our teeth, as it is a well-established that fluoride has no nutritional value for the human body. The FDA confirms that fluoride meets the legal definition of a drug and has approved its topical use in toothpaste and mouthwash, but has never reviewed or approved fluoride when it's to be ingested for the reduction of tooth decay. There has never been a completed and controlled scientific study proving that drinking fluoridated water is safe, beneficial, and cost-effective public health measure for preventing dental cavities. Fluoride, again, fluoride is the only chemical added to the public water supplies intended to treat people, I'm sorry, fluoride is the only chemical added to the public water supply intended to treat people drinking it and not the water itself. Research indicates that fluoride can negatively impact and reduce thyroid activity by interfering with iodine, somebody brought up iodine. Iodine absorbs, or absorbs, inhibiting thyroid function and affecting the body's ability to produce the thyroid hormones, potentially leading to hyperthyroidism. So going back to my summary and point, there's no proof ingesting fluoride is beneficial, but there is extraordinary proof of its corrosive and toxic value to humans and watershed systems, which, and this is my opinion, I'll take my trustee hat off, it's my personal opinion, its corrosive and toxic value to humans and the watershed systems, which in my opinion outweighs its perceived value against cost. But I'm going to say with that, I am more than happy, and I think the board is more than happy, for anybody out there to bring a report for us to really digest and look at, that kind of diffuses this. You can say it's skewed, but these are actual facts. Fluoride's a drug, it's something that we're asking us, that we're asking the layman to put into our water system, you know? And really, that's, again, that's just my opinion.
trustee Carol?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me, Kevin?
Close to the mic. Better stay close to the mic.
Okay. The pictures here, the reason I asked Jennifer to take these pictures is because when I first went up there about two months ago, it wasn't the first time up there, but first time up there trying to identify this, what it does. You know, my first concern was, see, I worked at West Point, saw a toxic ingredient for years. I have COPD now, I can barely walk up a hill without losing my breath. Different things I do, I just go out of breath. And I'm looking at these things up there, when I went up there, the plant manager showed me, like, he said, "Well, it pits glass." What is that, you know? To view to that first picture, in other words, the window is pitted, you rub your fingers on it and everything, you can put your marks on it, like you can see I did, but you can feel the roughness of it. The big computer that's behind that picture, it needs to be replaced now because of the effect it, this chemical has in the air on the wire system in that computer. So we've got to replace the guts of the computer. You can see in the next picture what it does, that's a metal door, you can see how that's affected that. You go to the next one, I worked as a mason for years at West Point. This building inside, even though it's a water building, is completely dry, you know? Now, you wouldn't see a floor or radiator like that in a place that's completely dry. You look, I looked on the pipes on the side of the wall, it's the same thing. This pipe here, this sink here, it's just a large sink, but that's what it's done to that. And you go, and you look at the containers that they come in, all right, sits corrosive right there, you know, we're debating that and everything. And as far as what Michael said, I think that he's absolutely right. We do, in this two months, we have gone up and taken a look at it, how to make this room bigger by joining it with the room behind it, taking that wall down, bringing it out front, putting a ventilation system in, and then going into the, it's kind of a garage out on the left side of this building, and bring in an air duct that'll bring in air to replenish this air that we're just stuck outside. Because otherwise, we'd be taking all the heat out of this building in the water. Now, if you go into this last one, this computer screen was just purchased not too long ago. That's what it looks like already. The plastic is pitted, the screen is pitted, this stuff is really running rampant on this. And I'm concerned about what it's doing to our employees' lungs. I mean, I can't breathe because I saw a dog breathe, so I know what that did to me. Now, I don't know what this stuff is doing to their lungs, but if you look at what it's doing to glass, it makes you wonder. So we, we're at a point where we have to find out if you guys want to keep it or not. Because if you want to keep it, we have to make those adjustments to that building. And we have to make them quick. Because we want to, we want to ventilate this stuff outside, it can't be breathed in like this. Next one we share.
Just hold on one second.
Just a little bit for tonight, I've done a lot of reading on this subject, as I'm sure a lot of you have as well, there's a lot of information out there, there's a lot of different things to consider. I was trying to figure out somewhat of a more simplistic way just to think about this. When you're thinking about a problem, what do you do? You kind of, you look at your pros and cons, right? And in the pro column, we're looking at reducing tooth decay, less cavities, less extractions, and saving money in dental costs. I found one site that had actually come out to a dollar amount that fluoridating the water saves approximately $32 per person per year. Now, finding sources that are true and accurate is not always the easiest thing either, so in just looking at those types of things, we're looking at oral health in the pro side. And in the con side, whether it's a small amount or not, that list was a little bit longer with dental bleusis, IQ reduction in children, thyroid dysfunction, bone fractures in elderly, neurodevelopment issues, and kidney and hormone disruption. When we're looking at things like that, I'd rather take my chances with the oral health than with any of those other items, no matter how small they are. So just something else to think on in that aspect.
I'm sorry, two folks had your hand up? I didn't remember the one.
So there is no ventilation in the building?
Mr. Leigh, are you, is it public?
So there is no ventilation in the building where the chemicals are at? No. The pictures are misleading, if there is no ventilation, where are the chemicals are stored at?
Mike, what's your expertise in the water system?
No, 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 we're not going to get it, it's a public hearing.
I know, I just want to know.
I know that, but this is how these things start, you ask that question, it's just going to go back.
I guess the only question I have with this, I mean, I was going to ask the same thing about the ventilation, but this is, is this, I've read that this is the process that we do, we have a certain way of doing the fluoride, the process is different from maybe others, is that what I'm understanding? Because that's what some of the comments that were made in the last couple hearings that I've read in the paper. Because, I mean, again, if there's no ventilation, it is kind of misleading, but is that, what's our, why is, what is the process for us putting it in here? And why is it like this? Are we kicking and doing, and how long has this been going on? This is not something that's, all of a sudden, we're talking about fluoride in 2025. Was this happening in 2019? Was it happening in 2015? Was it happening in 2010? Why is this all of a sudden now?
Okay, again, we're not, we're not going to close the public hearing, I just want to make a few comments. There is no specific item in the room that ventilates the room, meaning there's no fan. The room is open, it's open to the rest of the plant, the plant is not airtight. Is that a stretch? Yep. But that's what it is right now, okay? You can smile all you want, we're addressing it because we need to deal with it. That's why I'm doing this, that's why we are.
Exhausting.
No, no, Mr. Leigh, not right now, okay? So we are going to have to deal with it one way or the other. Part of this process is to engage the public, okay? And every little piece of information we get, it gets spun any which way, I've been saying this since we started. And I think tonight, it's been great, we, it shouldn't get personal, we're not, it's not one side versus the other, I don't want to turn this into a, how some of the other public hearings in the past have turned into. It's important that we get input from the public, okay? And it's important that we look at every piece of paper, all right? The board may sound one way or the other, I guarantee you, and I tell you, it changes. It has changed already since we started this process, I'm sure it's going to change as we continue it. I don't care what search engine you use, from the dumbest to the most sophisticated, whatever that means, I'm not a huge, you know, IT, whatever. You're going to find both sides on either, both sides of this issue, both sides, ten scientists say yes, ten scientists say no. So I just want the public to understand what's going on, and yes, however long it's been going, we're at this point now that we have to address it, okay? So, but I don't want it to make this all just about money. I've seen other communities do it, whether it's the south of us or the north of us, and so I just figured we would address it. And so far, it's been fine, and it's, we're going to keep it going. Because to have the dialogue and to understand what we're going to have to do, if, whether we keep it, whether we take no action, whether we remove it. And it's difficult to say, you know, like, every, that's why I say, if you, if you come up with a comment, try to stick to black and white, right? Because my mother and I always talk about this, when I was a baby, I was born in 1980, incidentally, I got an email from AARP at 45, which I think is ridiculous, but I have no one to yell at. So anyway, like, she said breast milk wasn't like a big thing during those late 70s, early 80s, right? It was formula, formula, formula. And now it's changed. I'm not saying that that's the answer to this situation, but all we have said from the beginning is that things do change, and we want to just look at it. And at the end of the day, the board, I think we have a good cross-section, right? We have folks who were in different industries, they aren't in different industries, we talk about it, and like I said, it does fluctuate. I know it might sound one way tonight or the other, it was the last meeting, it does change, and every piece of information we get, we try to cultivate, whether it's a two-page piece of information or it's a 30-page document, we've gotten them all. So we're going to keep the public hearing open, we're going to keep collecting data, we heard from some new folks tonight, which we love, I think that's important. We heard from some individuals who've been at the meetings and made some comments before, and we appreciate those as well. But just, if you, if you come with something, try to stick to whatever factoid you can. I like the CDC stuff, that was good, that was good, those were good inputs tonight. I like the other studies that we talked about. Mr. Wells has brought up in the past that there may be another product, another different type of chemical that we put into the water that helps it. I strongly recommend that folks go to our website, even though I hate it, we're in the process of redoing it, there is the water quality report, it does, it does show you what the numbers are, we are in all, as I started, when we started this process, we are all within the proper requirements per the Department of Health. So all the numbers are there in the water quality report, I urge you to do it, we do it, it's always last year, so 2024 is up, in '26, we have none. So we'll keep the public hearing going, we continue to collect data, and eventually we'll make a educated decision, or we won't have to do anything at that time, we don't have to move forward. The board wants to put it to the public, I get a little nervous with that, because I don't want it to turn into a whole complete craziness, but if the board wants to, and we want to try to do that and put it on a ballot, that's fine, too. But we want to just keep the public engaged, we want to go through the process, and I think it's important to do that. But we're okay, we're going to keep the public hearing open, which means I don't have to do anything, and we're going to move to the hearing. We say public hearing, but it's really a hearing on two different problems.
Due process.
Due process hearing. And the first one is on, and I appreciate everyone's patience tonight, patience tonight. It'll be on 11 Drew Avenue. It's complaint number 25 day 0125, state notice that you failed to remedy conditions that existed and violations. Code of the Village of Highland Falls, Chapter 170, property maintenance code 170 day 1, detrimental growth prohibited. There exist on said premises the following violations: rubbish, noxious weeds, lawn grass, other rank growths or growths which are harmful, poisonous, or detrimental to health, and on real property owned by property owner or sidewalks adjacent to there upon due notice, builders given such owner to cut, trim. So basically, it's property maintenance, grass to be cut. Is there anybody here from 11 Drew? Has the building code enforcement officers, building inspector, code enforcement officers here? All the proper documentation has been delivered, notice has been given, multiple notices, one tag to the front door, one served via return receipt, which was signed by someone at the address, who actually went to a fuel box. And I don't know, do you have anything to add, Mr. Hannawalt? Basically, we just need the property owner to cut the grass routinely. While that might seem hard sometimes, it does happen.
I can run over it if you want.
Only if you think, if you guys are okay, or are we okay, and we need to go into it a whole lot of? Yeah, I think we're okay. Anybody from 11 Drew? Going once, going twice? So, okay, next is going to be forty-six Church Street. Complaint number twenty-five, day zero, one, zero, six. Code of the Village of Highland Falls, chapter two, two, five, vehicles abandoned and junked. Two, two, five, PS three, storage restricted, restricted. It shall be unlawful for any person in the village to store, deposit, or cause, suffer, or permit to be stored or deposit any abandoned, junked, or inoperative motor vehicle or park or piece thereof on any private property within the village, except within a garage or another enclosed structure. Again, return receipt, certified mail was sent. The board has pictures, the car does appear to be not working, and on the property. Anyone from forty-six Church? Yes, ma'am.
So ours is noted on August twenty-seventh.
You want to come up here so we can just hear you, that's all? Thank you, by the way, thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah.
We appreciate it.
So ours is later on, August twenty-seventh.
Okay.
It was dated on, actually, it was filed on June twenty-fifth. It's just forty-six Church Street. I live in twenty-five Church, I mean, I do own the village in forty-six, but I do have a P O box.
Okay.
So there's no department number, maybe that was the reason why I never got it. So I tweeted this to my tenant, and he scheduled an appointment at the Novartis and made for September third. Because the car does run, he has to register and get plates, like I said, I had no idea until August twenty-seventh.
Okay. All right, so I'll give you like a slight ground meeting. Okay, so part of trying to transform this community is property maintenance, it's a big, 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 big part. And I, and from the amount of yard debris that we pick up every day, I like have, I have like one person on DPW that their primary job is to pick up yard debris, like it's, that's every day they pick it up. So that's good, because folks are trimming and cutting and taking care of their property. I just need you to focus on that as a landlord owning other properties, especially if you live nearby. So I appreciate you coming tonight. I'm, since the property owner, I actually, I've only had this happen like twice in my career, not, well, part-time career as elected somebody. I'm okay with allowing them ten days to take care of this, if the board is okay with that, but I don't know if I can do that.
Yes, I mean, the village, the purpose of the due process hearing is to hear from the owner of the property, and if the board decides that the owner should be granted additional time to remedy the violation, then the board can do that. But that's, that's it, Mike, you know.
I do understand, yes, we do have an appointment at the D M B for September third, which is tomorrow.
Okay, so tomorrow's.
And then I know we'll take the car away tomorrow. I don't know if it's a saloon or if he's doing something with the car.
Okay. Is the board okay with like seven or ten days to get this done, or is it registered? I don't particularly care whether they register it, it's drivable, that's fine, but it.
I don't think I need seven days, seven days will be okay.
Okay. Are you, do you guys?
That's fine, could we just have your name for the record?
Oh, yes, Vanessa Varantos.
And how is that letter spelled?
It's V A R R I E N T O S.
So, yeah, okay, so we'll deal with that at number six on the agenda, okay? So we're, I hear from the board calling that you'll probably have seven days to remedy it, and then that's it, if it's not done in seven days, okay, all right?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I, I think I've seen it maybe twice in twenty years, so that's, I mean, thank you for coming, that's, okay. Thanks for that. Okay, so we're just going to move on to the regular meeting, regular meeting. No comments other than welcome, and I appreciate everyone's participation and civility during the public hearing, I appreciate that. Any local organizations have any comments? Any elected officials out there?
Can I make an announcement?
You can make an announcement, as long as you're part of an organization.
Oh, yeah, I saw an organization called Paul Cook Car Enterprises. That was my, yeah, sorry. Yeah, Alga Anderson, I'm here representing the, I guess our organization, the Environmental Committee, was part of a group that got a grant from another organization called Partners for Climate Action, they're based up in Rhinebeck. And we're part of a cohort of six communities in the Hudson Valley that are engaging in what we're calling a community conversation. So our goal and objective for this, and the same is true for all of these, all six communities involved in this project, is to speak directly with every nook and cranny, all corners, every person in the community, to get their feedback, their input about what it is that they value about the community, what it is that they see they need in order to feel safe, in order to thrive, and to really riddle this down so that we can get to some actionable items. So over the course of a year, we're going to be having these conversations. So our first major event is going to be September twentieth, I invite everybody to come. We're doing a kickoff at a lot next to post office, A O G has graciously allowed us to set up shop there, weather permitting. We chose that site because we are not only kicking off this grant, but we're also going to have a commemoration of the July twenty-three flood. We feel it's time to, well, that we will learn something by looking back and absorbing what happened, and having that kind of frame some of the discussions that we're going to have going forward. So it's a dual event, kickoff of the grant and a commemoration of the July flood of two years ago, which had such a devastating impact on everybody in this community. We have speakers coming from Team Rubicon, which I think everybody here will remember, they came and decked out people's basements and were really beneficial in helping other recovery efforts. So we're excited that they're going to come and talk to us about how we deal with these sort of events, how we come together as a community and go forward. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that's on everybody's radar. I am looking for invitations from various organizations, church groups, black associations, neighborhood associations, where I can come, and Sally is on the committee, and Erica Prudge is on the committee, so we're all available to go forward and have these conversations with various entities in the community. I, September twenty-seventh, I'll be speaking at the Rotary, and so looking for opportunities to have this dialogue with other organizations.
Can you do me a favor, can you email all those dates to the board, can I have to?
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, public comment on agenda items. These are agenda items.
I'm going to, Jim Tilo from Mountain Avenue, I am going to stretch the approved Bear Mountain Bakery application permit to a zoning issue, so I see that as an agenda item. So I'm going to ask the planning board, I'm going to ask this board, I'm not representing the planning board, to consider the same things I asked a number of weeks ago. Number one.
I mean, that's as stretchy as you can, that's a Gumby stretch.
Plan, planning unit development for lots that are, that are not perfectly square with the community and provides the commercial or business opportunities. We need to move these lots, we need to build on these lots. Reduce the seventy-foot height allowance for senior housing, Mr. Dunn brought this up a year and a half ago, from seventy feet to forty-eight or fifty feet. These, I think, are easy, I don't know why we can't put five things on open public hearings and put it these next month. I ask the board to consider reducing the retail commercial space required for the first floor on the business zone from a hundred percent to fifty percent, we can't fill the commercial spaces that we have now. And so then why would we be building more? Redefine the B-one zone, we stopped the B-one zone at Key Bank, the B-one zone in our community has extended down to Pacieta, to Sullivan's Fuel Home, to a doctor's office, so one house away from Saturday Grove, so that should start, that should stop at Saturday Grove Road on the west side and on the east side, the commercial building, the old bowling alley, Frank Faith Building. And then to allow two family in the archery zone, providing parking is, can clearly be defined and available. I'd like to say that vision, I think it's vision, whoever's taking care of the plants on Main Street, it looks beautiful. And I'd like to give these board an idea of, developers are going to ask you, how do we address infrastructure costs? It makes no sense for us to do twenty-five or fifty feet outside that building on Main Street. We have a cost, it's a fee in lieu of parklands. We could simply change that fee in lieu of parklands to fee in lieu of infrastructure, okay? That's a simple move, we build a nest egg for future infrastructure work. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else on agenda items?
And I think it's vision and the beautification committee, Jody Downey, she works hard on that, so I just want to.
Jody Downey, and then DPW does the posting work. Okay, so new business, I approve bills and claims warrant number two, five, zero, four for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, total two hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and five cents. And I believe the board has a list, list of bills in front of them?
Yes.
I don't even, just here with Wadi or, but you have anything, are we okay? Need a motion to second? We can discuss if you want.
Yeah.
Let's do motion and second first. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Olivia, seconded by trustee Carol, and then discussion.
I just have one comment, I would like to give some credit to the mayor for his attempt in putting out these speed bumps throughout the village. We had three more that were on this building cycle here, and I believe they were, I think around a hundred and sixty each for each of those.
That's crazy.
I applaud the effort, but I really believe that we need to be putting in more permanent ones in the fashion of a blacktop speed bump.
Yep.
Okay, so thank you for the effort, but I do think that we need to shift that a little bit.
I don't disagree with that, and so when we start doing roads, we're going to talk about it.
Yeah, if we do a push rave, I think the.
Yeah, if I start tearing roads up now, it'll come be more than a hundred and sixty, but, no, no, it's, on some of the bigger roads that are the main thoroughfares, I think it's something we're going to have to start considering, I really do. I have a couple of comments on speed in general, but, yeah, anybody else? Okay, roll call. Just if you guys are awake.
Where are we to start? Trustee Olivia, hi. Trustee Ramus.
Hi.
Trustee Gardula, aye. Trustee Carol.
Aye.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes.
Okay, the next is a bunch of minutes, well, it's not a bunch, it's August fourth, twenty twenty-five minutes, but there's a lot to it. So there's a couple of resolutions, public hearings, and hearings, due to, due process hearing. So I just need a motion and a second for, to approve that, the minutes of August four.
Quick a motion.
Motion by trustee Carol.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ramus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. So number three is the ground ball, I think, is the resolution adopting local law number three of twenty twenty-five, amending chapter two, twelve, taxation of the Village of Highland Falls Code. I'm going to read this, because it was beautifully written. Whereas on August fourth, twenty twenty-five, an introductory local law titled Amending Chapter two, one, two, taxation of the Village of Highland Falls Code was introduced by, it seems so formal, Mayor DeSalvo, before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Highland Falls, County of Orange, State of New York. And whereas the Village of Highland Falls relinquished its status as an assessing unit in two thousand and two pursuant to fourteen oh two subsection three of the state real property tax law and adopted the town of Highland's assessment rule. Whereas the proposed local law authorizes the Village of Highland Falls to accept the town of Highland's assessment rule, including the tax exemptions provided to senior citizens and veterans, and whereas the town of, excuse me, the Board of Trustees convened a duly known as public hearing of said proposed local law, senior center, fifteen Drew Ave, Village of Highland Falls, on September second, two thousand twenty-five, which public hearing was closed after hearing from all those wishing to speak. Now, now therefore be resolved on a motion by trustee. Olivia.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ramus. Local law number three of twenty twenty-five was adopted on a roll call, roll, roll, roll call vote.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes.
Trustee Ramus.
Aye.
Trustee Olivia.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Gardula.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Number four on the agenda. This is the Village of Highland Falls Resolution adopting local law number four, twenty twenty-five, amendment to chapter two, one, two, imposing a hotel occupancy tax. This is also well-written. Whereas the Village of Highland Falls Board of Trustees determines that the village residents will benefit from an increased revenue generated by imposing a five percent occupancy tax on transient residential units. And whereas the statutory authority to impose such occupancy tax must be granted by the New York State Legislature upon introduction and passage of an amendment to Article twenty-nine of the New York State Tax Law, specifically subpart eight titled Taxes Administered by Cities, Counties, and School Districts of Part One, Authority to Impose Taxes. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees requested that the New York State Legislature to amend Article twenty-nine of the New York State Tax Law to authorize the Village of Highland Falls to impose a five percent occupancy tax on hotels, including apartment hotels, motels, boarding houses, and facilities designated and commonly known as bed and breakfast, and similar tourist facilities, including short-term rentals, properties, and if, when permitted by the village, that are rented for less than thirty days, whether or not meals are served. And whereas Senate Bill four, zero, five, three, which extends the authority of the Village of Highland Falls to impose an occupancy tax on transient residential units, was adopted by the New York State Legislature on July twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and extended August seventh, twenty twenty-five pursuant to tax law one, two, zero, two, day Z Z. And whereas on August fourth, twenty twenty-five, an introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter two, one, two, imposing a hotel occupancy tax was introduced by myself before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Highland Falls, County of Orange, State of New York. And whereas the Board of Trustees convened a duly known as public hearing of said proposed local law at the. local law at the Senior Center, Fifteen Drew Ave, Village of Holland Falls, on September second, two thousand and twenty-five, which public hearing was closed after hearing from all those wishing to speak. So, once I do this, now therefore be it resolved, section, we'll have a motion and second. This is just the process, and then we can have a discussion. All right? We don't have to roll right into it. So now therefore be it resolved on a motion by.
Motion.
Trustee Olivia. Seconded by.
Second.
Trustee Remus. Discussion.
I think if you go into the third, whereas near the end of the sentence, if and when permitted, means we need a little bit more work. If this is passed tonight, based on bed and breakfast or short-term rentals, which I discussed, it may pass back. So, I think with if and when permitted, it gives us.
The avenue.
Thank you. The avenue where we really need to go down, because discussion is definitely needed on the short-term rentals. So, that being said, I think this is a good thing. And without getting too deep into it, yes, the Airbnb's, if you go on any of the Airbnb, Verbo, there's probably at least twelve different sites out there. The amount of money they're getting per night is, compared to a fee, is a small price to pay for being an entrepreneur.
And, you know, I'll just add that, look, I'm not a big proponent of levying taxes, right? We say this every budget year, you know, nobody sits up here and says, hey, let's dream up a new way to collect more money out of your pockets. I think, you know, we're trying to do different things, you know? We put, sell antennas up and we collect rent, you know, we're getting a new internet provider, and the board had the fortitude and courage to approve them, and they're gonna rent a spot from Village Wall out to us, they're gonna pay us rent. And so we're trying to figure out different ways to generate revenue the best way we can, without having to go to the same, as I mentioned before, wells that we continue to go to. You know, I was talking to the board today, and, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, you know, I said that, you know, right now the general fund looks like we're in good shape, moving as we continue to move. It's something I monitor, the trustees monitor. We take it seriously, I mean, you know, all this stuff is taken very seriously, I don't want anyone to think that this is just a fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants. And I do respect the comments regarding, you know, the development in the community. I, you know, we wanna see the development in the community, believe me. Everybody on the board wants to see smart development in the community, okay? But when it comes to this particular niche, I don't think we are gonna hinder anything to come here. There are homes that are constantly getting bought up by investors, and I can't control, you know, there's, there's not much I can do to control who buys what, right? You know, we have a good mix, I think we have investors, I think we have new folks coming, nice person who just moved into under our apartment, a new family just moved on Laurel, you know, we lost one family, we got a new one. So, I think we have a nice mix coming in, you know, the community of investors and people who wanna live here. But this is a way to, as I mentioned before, the costs are crazy, I mean, to deal with this stuff. And, you know, I'm talking to the town as they basically get ready to enter into their budget process, and I'm already hearing double digits for the, double digits in the department of building. I'm not holding them to that, it's just the, you know, initial. But those are serious costs, and that's an A-fund cost, which means, I've had this conversation with Mr. Kildner on his front door, behind his garage, that's an A-fund cost, which means he and I are both gonna pay for it. So, you know, so I need to figure out how we get more creative, and that's why the town is passing this along as well. We're running it in parallel. So, just to keep that in mind, I mean, nobody else, I don't, you made some comments before, and everyone's entitled to them, so.
And I can say, I appreciate all that, I really do appreciate it, but I just think we're at a point, we're at the cusp of really great things happening, I don't think we're at that point right now, I don't think we have the tourism for that, I think you're gonna push people up to the Hampton, you know, the Hampton in Overing Woodbury, where they don't have that. You're gonna push them out to the short-term rentals, and you can't keep, you can't really regulate the short-term rentals, because they're not all Airbnb qualified, that's a lot of boredom out, because it goes onto a lot of the West Point site. So I don't think you're really gonna generate the revenue that we really want to, so I, unfortunately, I don't agree with it this time.
Right. And I, I don't disagree that we're not gonna get everything, but we're casting in a wide net, and if you're on Airbnb, the actual, there's like an Airbnb site, you're gonna get it, so trust me, all those, there's plenty, there's lots of properties, over a hundred or more that are listed on that Airbnb site. So, again, depending on what type of cycle they run through and how they get rented, you know, the comment before, whether I'm gonna generate five hundred dollars, or a thousand dollars, or ten thousand dollars, it's a five hundred, or a thousand, or ten thousand dollars, that's not the property owner's tax money. So, I'll take whatever I can get. If nobody else has any comments from the board, I'll call the question and we'll do
Okay, Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes.
Trustee Remus.
Yes.
Trustee Olivia.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
No.
Trustee Gardjulo.
No.
Okay, three to two, passes. Okay, next thing on the agenda is a resolution, budget transfer, general fund. Whereas at the September second meeting, twenty-twenty-five, Bills Board meeting, the Bills Board approved the budget transfer from general fund to workers' compensation. Now therefore be it resolved, the following budget transfer amount of one thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents be approved from Chase General Fund seven-nine-two-seven two NCA Comp Workers Compensation zero-six-five-eight. Motion by.
Motion.
Trustee Gardjulo, seconded by.
Second.
Trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we have the first resolution on eleventh, we're gonna break these out, is that, did I do that right? Okay, Village Holland Falls Board of Trustees Resolution concerning violation of property maintenance. So, we're just gonna talk about Eleventh Drew. Whereas the property owners have been given due notice of said violations and have been directed to corrective violations. Whereas the property owners were given due notice of a public hearing to be held with the Board of Trustees, September second, twenty-twenty-five, at seven P.M., to determine whether the violations have been properly remedied, and whether to order the corrective action to be undertaken by the village to correct said violations at the property owner's cost of expense, to bill said cost of expense to the property owner, and to levy same against the property. And whereas a public hearing was duly held by the Board of Trustees on September second, two thousand and twenty-five, and whereas the owners, the owner, or owners, did not appear for Eleventh Drew Avenue, and whereas the owners have not taken steps to correction of the violations, and violations still exist, and whereas the Board of Trustees is authorized pursuant to section one-seven-zero-dash-two of the Property Maintenance Law to authorize the village to undertake to remedy such violations at the property owner's cost of Now therefore be it resolved that the village, its contractors or agents shall enter upon the property, correct, and correct, the foreseen violations, and that all costs incurred by the village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner, and such charge shall be added to the tax of the property owner if not paid within thirty days of this notification to the last known address of the property owner as shown on the village's tax records. Again, this is for Eleventh Drew Avenue. So I need a motion, a second, and a roll call. Motion by trustee Gardjulo.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Remus.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Mr. Wait. Mr. Mayor, I would like the record to reflect that it is not a public hearing, it is a due process.
Correct.
Uh, Mayor DeSalvo. Trustee Remus.
Aye.
Trustee Olivia.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Gardjulo.
Yes.
Motion carried. So, for forty-six, Church Street.
Just introduce a resolution, holding remedy in abeyance for seven days from today.
So moved as instructed by the village attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, seven days. Don't let us down.
No.
Okay. Next on number seven is approve a prayer vigil for peace sponsored by the Clergy Association of the Town of Highlands at Lady Cliff Park on Sunday, September seventh, from two thousand and twenty-five, from twelve-thirty P.M. to five P.M. And we have a certificate of insurance on file. Seems pretty straightforward, are we in a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Remus, seconded by trustee Gardjulo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve James I O'Neil High School, two thousand and twenty-five homecoming parade on Wednesday, October twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, starting at Buffalo Soldier's Field, West Point, to the Farmer's Market Lot, or Lot Two, across from Sacred Heart, from four P.M. to six P.M. Certificate of Insurance on file.
Motion.
So moved by trustee Gardjulo. Second. By trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approve Funding Futures Grant Program Presentation Sponsored by the Highlanders Presented by Team Rubicon on Saturday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from twelve P.M. to two P.M. at the Senior Center, COI on file. Motion by trustee Gardjulo, seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorize the clerk Heidi Johnson and deputy clerk Treasurer, I don't know why, Ms. Brown, to take the exam at the annual fall two thousand and twenty-five night conference, the cost for each exam is fifteen dollars. I'm gonna move that, because we need notaries in Village Wall.
Yeah, motion.
I'm paranoid. Motion by me, seconded by trustee Remus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Number eleven. Approve Bear Mountain Bakery's application for permit to add awnings to the corner entrance door, south side window, and east side window pending certificate of insurance. The only thing I'll add to this is what I was talking with trustee Remus about, and it's, this is what I came up with, per the proper specs, rules, regulations of size and dimensions for, per the code. So I'll move it that way. And with that, I'll just add that, well, that was my motion. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. So, just.
Come on, sorry, no, you're welcome. I was gonna say, um, this is something that's in the code, and this is something that we really need to look at, it's this code book. I mean, there's things in the code, I think, that haven't been taken out, about, you know, where you can hitch your horse.
Just say, what is it?
Where you can hitch your horse. But with that being said, you know, this board doing applications and permits and stuff like that, I think that's, should be doing, we should be doing something more important, that's something that should be delegated more to the, either billing department, if everything's correct, because that's the easiest way to do it, or, once the billing department sees it, if he sees fit, it goes to either the planning board or the CBI. So, you know, these are things that we need to look at.
I would just like to add that I don't wanna, I don't wanna create a whole thing where someone just wants to put an awning on their building, right? So, maybe we could just task, after we get through this tonight, maybe we could just task the planning board with coming up with the law, and then let's just pass it, and then just go and get a permit and then get it. If they don't wanna stay within the confines of whatever law we passed, then let them go through that whole process. I'd hate to see, for a couple little awnings that you wanna put your business name on or whatever, that you have to go through planning, zoning, and then, you know, I think if we have to task the planning board with just coming up with either a set of guidelines, or we could just adopt from another community that would fit, without reinventing the whole wheel, because the only thing I'll say about this application is like, you know, it's twenty-four to sixty inches over sidewalk, eight foot plus or minus like that, so, you know.
Sir, we have the guidelines. I don't think it needs to go to the planning board.
No.
I think it needs to go to the billing board.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'll just like, real quick, just, not real quick, but you just go in and apply and move on. But I, just to make sure that they know what the specs have to be, and that's why I put it in my motion.
Can I just ask what the purpose is? Is it for aesthetics or just?
I think it's probably a little bit of both, it's similar to, I think, the internet, Paradise Liquor Store, they have like some awnings outside, I think.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Steel frame and fabric cover.
It's when I'm waiting online in the rain to get some of those big goods, I won't get wet.
Oh, well.
Pretty simple.
You're, so, the projection is twenty-four inches to sixty inches wide sidewalk. Again, it's a little vague, so just make sure that they know that we're, we're gonna approve it, it looks, sounds like, but they have to follow the specs, and that's in the motion.
I'll stand online in the rain if it's good.
So you guys okay? You have anything else? Okay. Motion second, we have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mayor and trustee Olivia.
Got it. Okay, anyone discussion? Okay, uh, roll call.
Sure. Trustee Olivia.
Yes.
Trustee Remus.
Aye.
Trustee Gardjulo.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes, I did see at the bottom it says insurance certificates have been ordered. So, they need to have that, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've rescheduled the next board meeting to Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P.M. That's a ground call. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Remus, seconded by trustee Gardjulo. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Public comment or anything? Anything you want? Anything?
I guess you're in. I need to go home.
On the board.
Yes.
That building originally had the most beautiful awnings all around.
Right. I remember that, actually.
I would say that would be a very nice addition, and again, on the hotel tax, just check with the town on how much the county has returned to them in their five percent, because I have Airbnb, I pay five percent occupancy tax on everybody that comes to my home, and I don't know that block has ever received an appointment.
I don't know, I already know the answer to that, we do not get a check from the county regarding, hold on, but don't, I don't say that as a criticism, we don't get, I believe that Orange County Department of Tourism actually handles that, those funds, and I think we get it in other ways, I think we are starting to tap into more of those resources now, at least this board is, but we do very well with the. But we do very well with the sales tax for our community, and I don't want to, I don't, the county has that contract in place, which actually is negotiated with the three cities in the county. Uh, so from whatever the county collects, I'm satisfied with it in regards to this particular item. So I understand what you're saying.
The other thing that we're up against is the larger hotels, and while you say it wouldn't impact us. They supply shuttle buses to West Point. Most of them will do that, and their, their prices per night are, we couldn't keep up with it in our top space ever. Ever in the millions, but they have that leverage over us, you know, smaller entities. So, you know, it's, it's kind of an unfair advantage.
Next meeting, we're gonna talk about tolls on Mountain Main. I'm just kidding, Scott. You're right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Between the, the world government. Yeah, no, Mountain Main, so if you're out of town and you're shuttling from another hotel, you're gonna pay to.
But that's only on very busy.
No, I, I know.
Graduation on the regular times when we're at a ball. I would be starving for somebody and asking them to pay an additional ten percent. To come here for what?
To go to Anheuser.
They're not coming south.
To go to Anheuser.
Yeah, they can.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'm gonna turn to the trustee.
Does the village still pay the electric dog for a row park?
There is no electric dog.
For some kind of, wasn't there like a dog for the geese?
There was a.
I think that was hardware cut out or something like that.
It was a plastic coyote that the kids stole, so. Seems to be a hot item amongst teenagers.
Who pays the village police to be at the Army football games?
They do.
So the taxpayers?
No. No. No, you, you said, you said who pays for the police department to be at? Any additional personnel we have on for whether it's, um, traffic control or escort gets paid by them. Army athletics. Yep.
I'd actually like Chief Torpey to talk to that because we actually had a long conversation about that. You wanna add to that?
Uh, yeah, so we provide the escorts for the away teams for all home games, provide the traffic control. And it's done so in a contract where it's actually profitable to the village and helps subsidize our budget.
Not a bad question. Good question.
Excellent question.
Once in a while, we're a half a step ahead. Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
In the past, when I looked at the, excuse me, when I, when I, when I looked at the, uh, the bills and claims, you know, you have a total. In the past, there was, uh, large expenditures listed. Can we, can you get back to that so we can see where, where the large expenditures are? Because all those funds don't add, don't add up to two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
No, those are, those are the bigger ticket items in those funds.
Those are the bigger ticket items.
Mayor.
Still off by a head.
We removed section eight from that listing, which is the difference that you're, you're calculating. Section eight is what's missing. No, we.
Yeah, it's excluded.
Yeah. We've instructed to exclude it.
Is there any update on, uh, on, uh, the, what's going on with FEMA?
Yeah.
Are you, you've been in?
Yeah.
That's good. Um, I'd also, uh, uh, there was speed bumps in the conversation today, and I live on Perry Avenue. And, uh, let's say, anybody who lives on the north end of, of the mount, of the hill, they go up Perry Avenue, and they go very fast. And there's a, a speed bump on Clydes, which is in the middle of the intersection, and everybody can go around it. So I would respectfully ask that for a month, you could put that down at the top of the hill of Perry, so that people go flying up the hill of Perry. They're gonna see, they're gonna, once they hit this speed bump, they'll, they'll, a few weeks, and they'll slow down. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see one more thing? Sure.
So standing on Main Street earlier, my friend. It's like four forty-five, we got out there. No one uses the parking meters. The village is struggling. We need to get revenue.
Yeah.
I mean, even if all those cars put a quarter. I think we can capitalize on that. I would like the police, or the guy we paid early to write tickets after hours.
Got you.
I personally got four tickets. I paid them.
I'm gonna check on it. I gotta check that out.
He does a job.
Anybody else? Okay. Do you wanna go first?
Oh, I have an option tonight?
Eh, I'm feeling generous. I could start either in.
Well, you can usually start at five.
I know, well, you know. Trustee Olivia?
I don't, I don't have too much for you tonight.
Okay.
About the reports for July and for August for the building departments. I'll read those off July. We had eight permit applications were received, six permits were issued, zero operating permits, twelve certificates of compliance, two certificates of occupancy were issued, thirty-four building permit inspections, zero fire, uh, fire safety inspections, twelve violation notices were issued, eight violations were closed out, seven municipal searches were completed, zero zoning variance applications, zero planning board applications, and twelve FOIL requests for the month of July. For August, twenty permit applications were received, seventeen permits were issued, zero operating permits, eleven certificates of compliance, zero certificates of occupancy, twenty-seven building permit inspections, zero fire safety inspections, forty-seven violations were issued, and twenty violations were closed out. Eight municipal searches were completed, zero zoning variance applications, uh, one planning board application, and nine FOIL requests. So that's for the building department. They've been actively working on many different things. There's always something going on in the building department. Um, a couple things, just as reminders, for September thirteenth is the next Chamber of Commerce Car Show. And their fourth annual Under the Stars event was rescheduled from the Fourth of July. That is September twentieth from six to nine at My Doc Card in Fort Montgomery. And that's it.
Can you send that to the clerk so we can?
I shall.
Trustee Ramus?
Thank you. Uh, so I'll give the report for the sewer plant during the month, uh, month of August. So we had two point nine inches of rain over the month. Uh, we were treating six hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons a day. It's not that bad considering the rain, uh, it's starting to come down a little, uh, so I think people, uh, when it does rain, have removed their sump pumps, uh, from the wastewater, and they're putting it outside, which is good. I mean, we need to recharge the offer anyway. Tam, uh, continues to haul sludge out of there from the thick. Forty-two thousand gallons, uh, this past month. Uh, hopefully that's gonna stop soon. Uh, they're definitely working on that. Because the sludge transfer pump, pumps were put back online.
Correct.
So that's a good thing. Uh, they continue to do their preventive maintenance down there. They also, um, were doing their checks on the different stations. They did put some new valves and check valves in at Pellwood, uh, which was good as well. The D E C received all their samples out to the lab, and they are working on the R C B, R V C blowers. They have some wiring that they need to do on those, uh, and I'll give a report soon if that's done. Two, two other quick things. So this past weekend, Main Street was super busy. The Army Home Opener was a little disappointing. They played their hearts out, uh, just came up a little short. But when I got out of the game that evening around eleven o'clock, every establishment, uh, that was open was busy. Great to see that. And then Saturday, same thing. Uh, so parents were up visiting, uh, just visitors in general. Good to see Main Street lively. Another thing that changed on Main Street was the My Town Market. I was in there yesterday, and it's opening up. They got rid of one of the aisles. And when you go in there, you see this big produce section. Produce was fantastic. Gentleman that took this over, he actually moved here, um, to be close to his business. And, uh, anything that has My Town on it, fifty percent off, go down to Goodville.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Trustee Carol?
One report was the daily water usage flow at the facility from eight twenty-three to eight twenty-nine was five hundred and eighty-five thousand gallons, uh, per day of the use. That was for the usage. Well, we have outstanding issues. The in-house pump has been ordered. Since the town of Highlands water usage was increased by ten thousand, uh, ten thousand gallons a day, uh, above the normal usage. Which, uh, maybe we should try to hook, you know, slow that down a little because our water level's at sixty-seven percent. That's been, that's the most so far this year, even though that's not bad at all. Let's see, the, uh, the dam at the bottom, uh, is, is holding, that's, that's sixty-seven. Spillways, uh, flowing and got lower bog. The water is near the top of the spillway at Jim's Pond. Nine W reservoir, the water's from the east side of the dam. Uh, work, works ahead. Main Control Panel, the E L C project has been approved. Four to six weeks is, uh, will be the starting date. Received a price for availability for the backwash pump, waiting for a second price. Let's see, uh, this one will be closing this week. I'll be working on that. And, uh, nothing, nothing really else to report. Thank you.
Trustee Garjulo?
That's me. Um, I didn't actually get a D B W.
Oh, happy birthday, trustee Garjulo.
You're very kind, Lee. I didn't actually get a D B W report, uh, this week, but, uh, to say nothing extraordinary, everything's always extraordinary when it comes to the village. And as always, I thank our own employees, I thank our D B W, I thank our E M S, I thank our first responders for always doing an excellent job. I know there's a significant accident over in Fort Montgomery that was taken care of pretty, um, pretty swiftly. And I know there was a fellow in West Point that kind of got kudos for that. Um, so thank you, thank you, everybody for all you do. I have actually something very exciting that Chief Torpey and I are gonna be rolling out. The Highland Falls Police in partnership with Community Connections. If you don't know Community Connections, I run a nonprofit for people with, uh, special needs, families with disabilities, and it builds programming for the community throughout the Hudson Valley, pardon me, throughout the Hudson Valley and through our community for kids that are out districted, and just to make them feel more part of the community. This program is called Safety. And what it is, it's a, um, it's a, it's a simple tag. It's a, it's a, it's a scan code tag that the scan goes to the police department. So it's unique to our police department, and you get a number. When you fill out the form, you fill out, you know, who you are, who you might want to contact, what your, what your issues might be. If you, you know, if you're a person with dementia, is there a trigger word that you're not gonna use? Do you have allergies? Is there something if you're brought to the hospital? You can put it on your car, you can put it on your front door. There's actually gonna be patches that you can put on your bag. So when you're stopped, like say, uh, you're a mom with a, with a child with autism, and you have an accident. The police officer will scan the tag. It'll come right to the Highland Falls Police Department, right, Chief, if I'm saying it properly.
That's right.
And, and they will say, I have a number two fifty-one here, and it will give all the specifics of that person to, um, to what they're, again, what their likes, their dislikes, and who they are, who to call in case of emergency. This is actually a game changer. It, um, you know, for people with dementia, you know, there's a lot of older people out there that are actually driving still. And, you know, I, I know I had that hard conversation with my mom not to drive anymore, and it took a long time, and I would have loved to have a tab like this. And we're hoping to get this throughout the county and throughout New York State. And it's huge, and it, it's, it's out now, right?
It, it is.
We can actually put out the forms now, and you can fill them out. They'll be at the Senior Center for people to fill out. They'll be with my group for them to fill out. It's not specific, you know, somebody asking, well, is it specific? Do you scan it and know who you actually are? No, it goes to the police department because you don't want any random person coming up and knowing who you are. You know, not your picture, but it'll have your picture in there on our database, and it'll say, uh, you know, everything there is about you. I'm pretty excited about it. I mean, I, you know, sometimes, you know, you sit in a trustee seat, and you, you know, you really want to make changes, and this is something that I'm, I'm really super excited about. And I think my son's gonna be getting one for me soon. But I'm excited. Chief, if you have anything else to add to that?
Uh, just that it's free, it's completely voluntary. Um, we treat everybody's information confidentially. Really, it's a tool for first responders, like the puzzle piece is pretty synonymous with, um, autism spectrum. So it's a good clue for an officer on a traffic stop, whether it be in town, whether it be in Woodbury, anywhere else. They're gonna see the puzzle piece and know that potentially somebody in the car may have an, an issue. So they would be able to scan, uh, the Q R code, which would come back to our police dispatch. And it would be great too, because we'll have a digital file on hand in the event of an emergency, like if you have an Alzheimer patient who could be wandering, we'll have information there. Uh, maybe the child loves going to Row Park and visiting the swings. Maybe, um, they love going to McDonald's. Gives us clues of where to look, how to communicate with them, and like trustee Garjulo said, um, it triggers, um, and ways to better communicate with, with the person. So it's, it's free. It's, it's a good program to have.
And significant to the fact, I think a few years ago, you, everybody remembers, there was a woman who, um, had dementia Alzheimer's, and she got lost. And we were all out looking for her. Um, the family can also say, listen, put this on Facebook. You know, I want her picture on Facebook so we know exactly who we're looking for. So it's actually pretty cool.
Is it the same thing as those, that envelope? I mean, this is more advanced, like the envelope program?
It's, it's kinda, it's kinda similar.
The state of New York has a, um, the, uh, the New York State Sheriff's Department has a program, right, Jim? It's more like a mobile life alert type of thing. This is specific to our community, so you could really just be, you could be traveling in California, and you can say, listen, this is something in our community. So it's an extra barrier of protection, and a lot of people, you know, that I've spoken to are, you know, even the seniors and a lot of the, my, my guys in my group are really, are excited about this. Again, I, I'd love to get it out to the, the whole of New York State, and the whole, um, county, and it'll get it be known. So, uh, it's just something I'm really super excited about, and I'm glad to announce it today. And I think Chief Torpey actually went, well, no, Chief Torpey actually really, he went out of the way with that. I, I always say I'm the idea guy. I'm the rhetorical idea guy. But he went into it, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
This is, this is available for everybody?
Yes.
Uh, and that includes Fort Montgomery?
Correct.
So we're reaching out.
Correct. Um, I know Chief will talk to the Fort Montgomery Police Department, see if they want to implement it. Actually, um, we spoke to the head N P during the West Point game, and the N Ps at West Point are gonna put this into, uh, implement this also, so we'll share a database. So really, we'll actually, pretty cool.
So the only, the only issue, uh, a couple of quick things. First of all, fantastic. I was talking with the chief the other day, and he mentioned it, and I stopped him. I said, I didn't want to hear it because I didn't want to have to share it until trustee Garjulo, it was her baby, so to say. And I didn't want to mention it in any of my updates or anything. I, I commend you. It's, whether it was your idea and the chief followed through, but the Highland Falls P D, uh, kudos, kudos, kudos. The envelope that you're talking about, which is something that the Orange County Sheriff, Paul Arteta, and the Orange County Clerk Kelly Escue put together with a committee. Paul Arteta, and the Orange County Clerk, Kelly Esquieu, put together with a committee, while I actually, at my other job, was just happened to be there that one day. They have an envelope for folks who, for special needs folks who actually drive. This could be both. This could be somebody in the car or it could be someone that actually operates the vehicle. And the envelope has all their information.
This is more advanced.
It's called a clue to something.
Yeah, it's, it's a blue envelope, but it has all their, this won't have like their driver's license, all that stuff. This has information, when you click the barcode, the Q R code, it goes, it basically sends you to us.
Yeah, it'll also be integrated with our software system. So this way, if we get a call to an address, it'll automatically flag and this way we can tell the responding officers that somebody at the home.
Correct.
May have some sort of a condition.
It's, it's, in conjunction, I think it's going to be fantastic. So I commend you both for, for working on that.
And Peter already mentioned like people with P T S D or something.
Yeah, whatever. You just get the, you get it, you put on the car and it's, it's available.
That's awesome.
So that, that's, that's fantastic. So I'll go pretty quick. As Trustee Carroll mentioned, the water reservoir is at approximately seventy percent. So, what does that mean? Nothing yet official, but stop watering your lawns for a little while, okay? Take a little break from watering your lawns. I appreciate the green grass, it looks fantastic. Stick to your gardens for food and, and I'm going to even say stop watering your flowers too for a little bit. Hopefully we get some rain in the forecast. Usually September, October can be wet, so I'm not worried about it, but once we get to fifty-five percent, you know, four months is major, so I don't want to have to have a major issue report at long to board. So conserve where you can. Kudos Army Football, was their first home opener. I want to thank the soup superintendent, General Gillen, and the folks up at West Point for their hospitality, for the board. It was nice to have conversations, it was nice to enjoy an activity that maybe we take for granted sometimes. I know I kind of took for granted sometimes because it's like, you know, folks who want a pool, you know, they're always complaining about the pool, but people who don't have a pool want to swim in. So it's right here and it was a nice, nice day, the parade, all of it. I've actually never seen all of it, I'm sorry to say, but it was very moving and I'm sad that they didn't win, but I think they maybe learned a few things from the game. So I'm, I'm positive and hopeful they'll have a great season like they did last year. Again, I do want to thank them. In addition to that, the community was very busy from like Wednesday to Sunday, so that was very good. Main Street was hustling and bustling, both new places that have opened and some of the folks that have been there already, that's always very good to see. I saw some trustees out and about, it was nice. Speed, I'm going to keep talking about it. In fact, I'm going to work on with the chief to bring to the board about the possible reduction of speed for all village streets from twenty-five to twenty. Twenty-five to twenty. The thought is, is that if we bring it down to twenty, most people will go twenty-five to thirty. Right now at twenty-five, everyone's going thirty, thirty-five. And I'll get to a police report in a minute, it's not for lack of stopping. So I will bring that to the board very, very soon. I saw some chatter on Facebook about goose droppings. This board and myself, I'll take that back. I have a complete hatred for the goose, the Canadian geese population. I don't really hate anything or anyone, I do not. I hate Canadian geese. I'm proud to say it at this meeting. We had, and I will say dealt with them before, and we will, are going to come up with whatever way possible. I happen to be in a community because I was told by Councilman Sullivan that if you have swans in your lake or pond, you do not get Canadian geese. Well, I don't know where I was, but I happened to see two couples of swans in a lake and I was like, "Wow, there's no Canadian geese here." And then I actually parked, got out of the car and walked, walked towards the lake, well, swans were dummies, but they were in the pond. And I think that might work, so we're going to, we may try that. I, I, I think it's a little crazy, but I think it works because the kids maybe can't get to them, because we've tried the coyotes and they go missing. So I think we're going to try that. We're going to get two swan couples. So if you start hearing folks talking about swans back at the vote party, they're not, they're probably just, not the people saying they're dummies. I was mentioning tonight about zoning, I've mentioned it to most of the board members one-on-one. I'm working with the county, Alan Sorenson from the Orange County Department of Planning on a couple of tweaks to some zoning. I've also spoken with our village attorney and I'll probably by next meeting have something for us. Very, very minor stuff to piggyback off what we did in talking with some, in talking mostly primarily with the county, I think we just have to tweak a couple of things that other communities have done and we, I think, missed out on the last round, but very minor, it'll be in the open, no cloak and dagger, as mentioned before, it'll be in the open, public, public, public. So just so the board and the community knows that. D P W, yard waste, as I mentioned before, it's on every street, every day. I, I thank everyone for cleaning up their most pristine lawns and trimming the trees because it's on, it's every day, every day we send a truck around. So if we didn't get to it, be patient. As Gary Boyce would say, "We need that, we need those leaves, don't take them." As, as Trustee Ramus has mentioned about the sewer for sludge hauling, that was a FEMA project. There were two very large pumps that, I don't know all the technical terms he, he does, but basically what, at the end of the day, both of the pumps are put online towards the end of this month, so that, that's the twice-month sludge hauling, which costs us a lot, is going to be reduced. And then we start the belt press, which basically compacts the solids and the liquid down to small, small manageable amounts that go into a, a container and then gets taken out every other month to every other three months. One, one, three, every three months. So that's the process and that's going to start taking place actually this week because they got done on, as you mentioned, they were, they're put back online. Quick update on FEMA. After talking to a few communities, a, a few people in Orange County and my conversation with our village engineer, we're not the only ones that seem to be a little bit on hold with revenues coming back or expenses that get approved, the project gets approved and we're waiting for reimbursement. So we have been trying to contact, as, since I took office and, you know, the new board came into being, we've been trying to contact our point person. Well, between Doge and all the other things going on and early retirements as they, the federal government did early retirements and if, we had a new person every week for a little while and then it just got dropped. So last week, no, the week before that, the week before that, we were starting to send an email, no, I'm sorry, a month and a half to two months ago, we started sending an email, it was every two weeks, then it was every week, whatever. And then at some point I said, "All right, we're not really getting anywhere with anybody, so let's try to talk to the politicians," right? Because they're always, you know. So we reached out to Congressman Ryan's office and we got a meeting with the folks there and we got a little movement and, you know, they did the typical, I'm going to try to say this right now, they did the typical Texas two-step, right? So the federal government says, "It's not us that's the problem, it's the state." Because what happens is, is regardless of FEMA, FEMA cuts a check to the state and the state distributes to the communities, all right? So met with the federal government and they said, "We're going to look into all your projects," which they did. Our engineer gave a full rundown of everything and I think we're, we're hoping to hear something, I think it's the end of this week or early next. Anyway, they said, "Well, we're hearing from Dishes, which is the state organization that distributes the money, that they're waiting for congressional approval." And the congressman's office says, "No, there is no congressional approval because the FEMA money is already approved, it's part of the normal budget." Okay. So they said, "Well, maybe talk to your state representative." And I said, "That's funny, I've got a meeting on Friday with my state representative." So that's great, we're going to take care of this issue. And they said, "Well, we'll look on our end." I said, "Perfect, because we're getting no response from anybody at FEMA." Okay, great. So then on Friday, I met with Senator Schufus's office. I was able to meet with Senator Schufus, we talked about a few different things and that he had for me, that he, some things that we'll discuss as we continue to go along. And then he asked me if I had anything for him. And I said, "Yeah, I, I have bureaucratic, bureaucracy, is that how you say it? Say it for me."
Biocracy.
Biocracy. I have the red tape I need cut. Okay, I can't even say the word because I hate it. So the red tape needs to get cut, right? So I said, so I said, "I don't really care about the political nonsense that we're going to talk about. I don't care which party's in charge, I need the funds to flow open again because I'm at the point now where I'm going to have to stop, right? Because I'm just there, I'm at, I'm at the wall." The board, I mentioned this to the board. So I need you to find out, Senator Schufus, and he, very polite, it was, it was actually my, one of my first one-on-ones with him, it was actually very good, it was pleasant. And I said, "I need you to find out from Dishes what the holdup is." Because I'm hearing from the federal government that it's, it's Dishes and now I just want to make sure Dishes is not saying it's federal government, because there's no congressional approval needed for the funds to turn on. Okay, great. So that's my update. Right now we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, but I had said to both of them candidly that, and the board knows, because I've mentioned this before, I'm at the point now where my patience is wearing thin and so I told them, basically I'm playing cards face-up poker and I'm just going to have to go public. It's not a threat, it's just I'm at the end of the road, so, you know, that's just the bottom line. The board knows that, it'll be a meeting like this, only we're going to go to every news outlet I can. And I'm not going to name, it's not a, I'm just saying, listen, we're, I'm in America, I'm in Highland Falls, I'm outside the gates of West Point, I'm in hometown USA, I need the FEMA money. It's kind of simple, so, so we can continue working on some projects. So I think, I, I have to let the process take place a little bit. We are four months into this as me sitting here, so I think we're doing an okay job. We still have funds, once the, on the general side, just a quick little more update, on the general fund side, once we complete the Little League field, general fund will be, well, the funds that we borrowed money for will be exhausted for right now, so we're waiting on replenishment. And then we have a couple more water projects to do and then, like, we're going to start with the filters. We're going to start looking at one filter, which is not necessarily FEMA, but then there's a couple other little pumps and stuff that we're waiting on from FEMA. So once that money's exhausted, we'll, we'll put that on hold. And then the sewer plant, this last big project was basically these two pumps, which is a big, was a big expense, not necessarily the pumps, but bringing this sludge out until the pumps came online is pretty much the last big project down there with the funds that we borrowed. So as soon as we get the green light to submit, we have a lot to submit for, because we've gotten a lot of work, believe it or not, done, it's just getting the replenishment. Keep in mind, we borrowed six million dollars, so just to keep that in your mind. So I'm, I'm positive right now, my discussions were good, but that's, that's where we're at, that's up to date. Thank you. That's all I have.
Sorry, I've got one more quick thing, please.
Oh, I have actually one more, I have two more there, but...
On a positive note, on Saturday, Cadet Pickett's family came up to watch the game and then they went down to the city on Saturday. Along the way back, the unfortunate thing happened, there was an accident in Fort Montgomery. A car went off the road, hit a pole, wires were down and Cadet Pickett didn't waste no time, jumped right out, got his father out as well and they pulled the guy out of the car before it actually went up into total flames. So shout out to Cadet Pickett in this event.
Absolutely. I forgot to do the police report, so I'm sorry. Give him a round of applause, that guy. And we're going to try to get him to a meeting so we can applaud him appropriately. So total calls for the Highland Falls P D were eight hundred seventy-six, there was twenty arrests, seventeen of them were misdemeanors. Someone's is issued, sixty-two parking meters. Tickets? Eighty-two traffic for a total of one hundred and forty-four tickets. Meter collections, one thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars, this is for the month of August, and eight dollars are court fees. So a couple things. Mr. Wojciechowski, who does the meter, mate, who works part-time, does do a good job. He writes a lot of tickets, he is constantly walking on Main Street, he is vigilant, if he sees something, he calls in the P D, he's got a little radio, he's got his little ticket book and for what we pay him and what, he does a good job. We do collect money from the meters. I'm not going to pay somebody, and depending on what time it is during the day, the last hour, I, for twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred and seventy-four hours collected in the month, I don't think it's too bad for, you have to remember, you can put a nickel, a dime, or a quarter in there. Most places are a quarter, which is something we might want to talk about too. I mean, we always put the nickel and the dime there for seniors who had a, you know, we wanted to be cognizant of the money they spend, but we also have the senior pass now. So most communities have, it's a quarter and it's a quarter for like fifteen minutes or a half hour, but then for here, it's an hour for a quarter. So again, I don't want to beat the residents over the head, but maybe it's something for us to look at, again, trying to be creative. And I don't want to take away from Main Street and people shopping. So, you know, maybe we change what we, we collect for the meters, but maybe we given up, maybe we shorten the amount of time you have to do it. Maybe instead of eight to six, we do, I don't know, nine to four and we just do a quarter or nine to three and it's a quarter. You know, we may collect a little more revenue, but we don't want people to stop being on Main Street, so just stuff to think about. And a total of seventy-seven hundred miles were, were driven. Lastly, and I'll mention this tomorrow, the Mobile D M V's coming Friday. Orange County Clerk Kelly Esquieu, fabulous clerk, she's wonderful. Friday, September fifth, ten to twelve and then twelve, one to three thirty, Lot Two, across from Sacred Heart. All registration transactions, all license transactions, including real and enhanced and enforcement transactions. So that's a lot of stuff you can do right at the Mobile D M V Friday. Last time they were scheduled to come because of some of the wonderful roads we have in the state, it blew a tire, they couldn't get here. So I told them, "I don't want to hear that this time, we'll come out, we'll send a D P W truck to tell them." So that's all I have. I'll take a motion, Roger.
Motion.
Second? Oh, you want to say it?
But I did want to tell you that the meter guy does not discriminate, he looks at my car and he's like, "You've got that car and you can get it for twenty-five cents, it's slacking with a ticket." No privilege around here.
Thank you. All favoritism.